You're ready. I'll call the meeting with the McHenry County zoning Board of Appeals to order. If anyone could please stop chatting, we're calling the meeting to order. Any member of the public that's here that thinks that they would like to speak today, if you haven't signed in up front, I would ask you to come in and sign in the sheet that's up front. The purpose for our hearing today is application 2023-021. This is a petition for a request for an A2 agricultural district to an A1 agricultural district on 6.467 acres and a conditional use permit to allow a reception facility and art studio on 2.673 acres. The address for this petition is 17519 Lincoln Road, Harvard. The applicant is Henry and June Junie. The subject property is located on the east side of Lincoln Road, approximately two-thirds of a mile from the intersection of Lincoln Road and Irish Lane in Heartland Township. At this time, I would like the zoning board members to introduce themselves in the township in which they reside, starting on my left. Mary Donner, Greenwood Township.
Robert Kosen, Elgantland Township.
Charlie Eldridge, Richmond Township.
Linnea Coustra, Alden Township.
Nikki Gardner, Dundee Township.
Kurt Snoblo, Riley Township.
Thomas Jurz, Coral Township.
This petition has been reviewed and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. The publisher's certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated June 7, 2024 and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of posting was signed and the date posted was June 5, 2024 and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit of mailing was signed and the date mailed was June 4, 2024, thereby meeting ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice and publication in the newspaper and all three match. The filing fees have been paid. The endangered species consultation was not required for this petition. And then McHenry County Soil and Water Conservation District report has been received. This would be NRI number L23-038-4498. I'd like to, for those of you who have never attended a zoning hearing before, I would just like to just explain a little bit about a hearing, how the hearing works. So the petitioner, Mr. Junie, will be able to, he and his counsel will be able to present their case, why they feel like this petition should be granted. And then they will be asked questions from the board and then from staff. And then at that time, if there's any member of the public that would like to ask a question regarding his testimony, you will be allowed to do that. You'll have a three-minute time limit. And I ask that if you're not repetitive, if somebody's already asked the same question, you know, don't repeat it, but you'll be able to ask questions. And then later in the hearing, after the staff gives their report, then if you have a comment, then you have another time that you could come up. And at that time, you could comment as to if you're for or against and why. And again, you'd have a three-minute time limit on that. So at this time, anyone who thinks they would like to speak, whether you're going to ask a question of the petitioner, the petitioner's attorney or staff, anyone who's going to speak, I would ask you to raise your hand and be sworn in. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. We'll turn it over to Mr. Junie and your attorney.
Thank you. My name's Jimoto. I'm here on behalf of Henry and June Junie. June is not here today. And this is our petition. And when you're ready for us, we'll begin.
You go right ahead.
We received just some introduction stuff. We received today some questions that maybe some of the ZBA members had regarding the petition. We also received today a possible concerned citizen regarding the project and some information that was in the mailboxes. So today, in the presentation, I'm going to try to cover a lot of these questions and address them and things that aren't brought up or aren't addressed. Please feel free to ask the questions along the way. But before I get into that, I would like to request that the petitioner's application exhibits petitioner's conditional use responses submitted along with the staff report for the ZBA in the minutes of the January 3, 2024 meeting, which is in the packet that was done from the staff, be entered into evidence and considered by this board along with whatever testimonies that's presented today for both the MAP amendment and the conditional use.
Okay. There is.
Thank you very much. If I can go to exhibit B, if that's possible. Yeah, number six.
That's as close as I get, Ed.
Oh, no, no. I'm sorry. Exhibit B.
Oh, B.
I'm sorry.
You said E.
I'm sorry. If I don't speak up loud, please let me know. I tend to talk softly sometimes. Thank you very much. Okay, so this is what is currently out there. This is an A2 piece of property. It's a little over 10 acres of property. Is it okay that I kind of move back and forth to this question? This is a little over 10 acre piece of property which currently sits out there as it sits right now. It's an A2 piece of property which is owned by Henry and June. And it's surrounded by more of their property, which is considered A1 property. And this piece of property consists of their home and the grounds, let's say, and part of the pond and the driveway coming in. And so this is the initial subject property that we're talking about, that we're going to ask to take part of that and reclassify it from A2 to A1. And of that 10 some acres, we're going to ask to reclassify 6.467 acres of that. If we can go to exhibit C, please. Perfect. So this exhibit now shows the reclassification. So that A2 piece is now just this, let's call it a reversed L going this way. So that 6.47 acres is an A2 to A1 reclassification. Nine times out of 10 probably, when you're in these zoning hearings, you hear a lot of the A1s going to an E5 or an E3 or some other type of zoning. You don't see a lot of A2s or other ones coming back to an A1, which is A1, which is less dense property. And the reason why we're doing that is because it was originally cut out for the A2 was in order to accomplish this conditional use permit. And this conditional use permit requires that you have it within an A1 zoning, not an A2, within an A1. So we're carving out this 6.467 acres of property. The next question then becomes, well, of that six, well, that's not typically enough property in order to do that. However, we have enough surrounding property around that to combine that in order to get over the necessary amount. We're looking at approximately 49.868 acres. If we could go to exhibit nine, or excuse me, exhibit D. Great. So exhibit D then, what that shows you is after the reclassification of the A2 to A1, which is the six acres, and that six acres then is combined with the surrounding property, it gives you approximately 49 acres of A1 property. Now, that's not what asking to be reclassified, strike that. We're not asking the 49 acres to be a conditional use. We're just asking that that six acres be combined with the A1. So we're asking six some acres from A2 to A1. Of this 49 acres, we're going to ask for a little less than 1%, about 0.6% of that total property to be part of the conditional use. And we'll go to that next. If we could go to exhibit E? Perfect. So what this exhibit shows is the conditional use. And I think a lot of the reasons why we're here today and concerned citizens is what are we talking about? What pieces of property are we asking to be part of this conditional use? And we're carving out of that 49 acres, 2.673 acres of that property. And when the request is done, we've asked that it's for a reception facility, a facility and art studio. Well, that's the definition that the ordinance provides for this particular type of use. So we don't plan on having art sales or art things going on a lot. What we plan on doing is having a venue's location, a facility's location, a place to do possible yoga, some wellness retreats, have a wedding, senior birthdays, anniversaries, a place to have small gatherings of individuals. Well, sometimes when somebody hears the word venues, they think of large bands and large groupings and large gatherings. This conditional use is designed to be private, to be unique, to be offset. And by design, as you can see from this conditional use, and part of our application is saying, hey, look, this site plan is being part of the application, and this is what we're willing to live with. And you'll see there, there's approximately 50 parking spaces. Of that 50 parking spaces, 48 of them are regular. There's two that's going to be paved for handicap. And so the most amount of cars that we're going to have, max number of cars is 50 cars. Our anticipated venue participation or grouping is anywhere between 40 and 100. So that, I mean, we're not looking at thousands of peoples or hundreds of people. We're looking at 40 to 100, max 150. So our facility's maxed at 150 as far as participating.
140.
Pardon?
140.
I'm just, not 150, 140. So 140 as far as the number of individuals. With that said, what does that mean? That means one of the issues that was raised in one of the concern letters was the traffic that is going to be traveling down Irish Lane, which is a cut between McGuire and Lincoln and some of the other roads that are going around it. Well, if you have max 50 vehicles that are traveling, coming from whether it's the east side, the west side, the north side, and coming in at different approaches, on just on average, you're probably going to have 12 cars on an event day going down one of those directions. So the usage of the road or roads is not heavily populated. It's not 12 cars going one direction on one event day is not a lot of cars in the traveling part. What the bigger issue is, and it was gleaming from the writer of the report to the county, was that it's the roads, the condition of the roads. And we are very sympathetic to that as well because we are property owners, we travel those roads, and we understand that highway commissioners right now, their budgets are tight, they're limited on funds, they're limited on resources, and they can't get the roads sometimes to the standards that we may be used to or we would like to see. So the issue of the roads is an issue that we have as well with regard to maintenance and repair. I leave this with the board. As much as we would love to help with paving and taking care of the roads, we can't unfortunately because the township authority for the highway commissioner is in control of repair and maintenance of the roads, and that's their job, it's their responsibility unless it's a county road or a state road, that's their responsibility. And so we would just hopefully encourage, if this does go through, that we would encourage both Alden and Heartland Townships to improve their roads if possible, not only in this location, but other locations where there's need. So we feel very sympathetic to that. With that said, also with the traffic and the population of 40 to 100 people possibly being, I think, one of the concerns was noise, people drinking, people drinking and driving. Drinking and driving is a concern for us too. It's a criminal offense if somebody's drinking and driving. You see somebody doing it, report it. This venue is not designed to be something like that. This is a venue for people to gather, to have fun, enjoy the experience, the tranquility, the picturesqueness, the views, and enjoy family. So our concern for drivers that may be drinking or drivers that may be intoxicated, we share the same sentiments as those individuals. As far as loud music and what may be going on here, so in a wedding-type situation, you would have music. We'd be willing to, the petitioners, you know, we would say, cut it off at 11 o'clock, clean up by 11:30, whatever, some time period so that there's some relative comfort that this event or events won't be going on all through the night and keeping people up. The property is surrounded by hundreds of large amounts of property, brush, trees, natural landscape, lakes that provide general buffering and ambiance. The design here is to give somebody a location, a location to have an event. The petitioner has no desire to open up food and serve food and do any of that. One of the things that came out of staff, and we heard loud and clear, they're not allowed into the residence, they're not allowed into use the washroom, they're not allowed to, you know, go into the residence and use, they're two separate places. The residence is the residence, the venue's the venue, and no two shall cross. So they're two separate pieces, and we made that clear. The other concern was that the individuals who were then, well, how do they use the washroom? You know, what are you doing for the washroom as well? We've designed on this plan, you'll see it in the far, I guess, far right corner of your screen, there, a little box, and it says a proposed 20 by 10 washroom toilet. So what we have there is trailer, self-contained, individual has to use the washroom, wash their hands, that's where they would go. Now, one of the questions, and I think it came up in the January 3 hearing at Staff Plaid, was when does it take, when does this get removed? You know, does it just sit there or how does it? Made it very clear that it gets removed after the event. Event's over, trailer's gone. So we're not anchoring and putting permanent structures in here, we're not putting bathrooms in here, we're not using facilities from the main house. One of the questions that we saw that was, well, where's electricity coming from? Well, within the conditional use area, within the conditional use area, there's some electricity, and so there's an electrical spot to allow for, hook up for electricity within that conditional use area. But for water and well purposes, we're not allowing that to be, there's no access, nobody's running a hose from this property to the other property to allow water access. So that's not happening. Again, the two shall not meet. Electricity, there is actual electricity on the property, so electricity would be addressed within that conditional use piece of property there. How and what type of foods? Well, whatever the venue decides. Again, it's going to be catered. The caterer will be taking care of the foods and the cook and the cleaning. Again, one of the things was very clear, then they need to be licensed. They need to be, make sure that they're licensed and making sure that they're following those guidelines. As far as garbage, sometimes full catering services take care of all the garbage. However, if there is none and they don't take care of it, we're going to be responsible for it. We're okay with that. We will make sure that's done. We have garbage pickup, so the place is not going to be left with garbage flying around, making sure that it'll be a cleaned-up piece of property. It's an issue that, you know, the maintaining of the grounds. We have groundskeepers and people that take care of the thing, the manicuring. Again, this is something that we're trying to create moments, we're trying to create memories for individuals so that they have something to share with their friends and family. And it's all about the experience. One of the conditions that was talked about, that was suggested by the staff plaid, was making sure that, you know, we get born to this. Of course, we would accept that. That temporary portable restrooms must be removed after event, absolutely, we would accept that. All other federal, state and local laws shall be met, absolutely, we plan to do that. We'd go one step further and provide hours of operation. So if there's concern as far as how long events are going, you know, we'd be open discussion on that. So those are some of the things that we'd be looking at to make sure that it's being taken care of. We had, for concern sakes, we had the Harvard Fire Department out. We had them look at our road, we had them look at our travel, we had them look at the turning wages, making sure that if an ambulance, making sure an ambulance could get around and do their thing. One of the issues was, well, what happens if there's an emergency medical? Harvard can respond, they had no issues with it. 911 would be our first immediate call. If some type of plan is necessary or desired, we'd be happy to, you know, put back some type of additional information or plan with the Harvard Fire Department regarding that to make sure that they're okay with it. One of the other issues was making sure that timing, you know, when can things happen and when do they happen and how often is this going to happen? We're looking at 12 events out of the year, so out of a 52-week year, we're looking at 12 events. So we're not looking at doing an event every weekend, every 52 days, 52 weeks of the year. So we're looking at approximately 12 events out of the year to take care of the situation. We'd be happy to start moving through some of the standards for the approval.
That'd be great.
Okay. So with an application, this is a two-part application. There's the application for the MAP amendment, which is then taking that six some acres and adding it to the remaining piece. And so we're asking for reclassification from A2 to A1. In that reclassification, there's some standards that need to be met pursuant to 16.20.010.e.e1 of the McHenry County Unified Ordinance. That first one is the compatibility of the proposed zoning with the existing use in the zoning of nearby property. The proposed zoning is compatible with the existing use in zoning of nearby properties. The surrounding property is predominantly agricultural and the proposed zoning aligns with this character. The proposed use would not create any significant conflicts or disruption to the current neighborhood or dynamics. So when you look at the plan, if you look at the zoning and the land plan, you'll see that it's agriculture.
I'm referring to the A2 to A1 rezoning.
Yes.
Without the conditional use.
Yeah, I'm just, yes, just on the A2.
Just trying to be clear for everybody.
Oh, yeah. So we're talking about the A2 to A1 right now. So right now, around the property is all agricultural. And so what we're seeing is the six acres that we're taking from the A2 to reclassify it into the A1, that's consistent, that A1 is consistent with the surrounding A1 property. So if you look at this map, the surrounding map, you're seeing A1C, which is A1 conditional, and A1, if you look down there, the southwest, let's call it, again, A1, A1 with a variance, A1 conditional, A1 conditional. And so, and even if when you go further out to the east, you'll see A1. And so what we're saying here is this use, this reclassification, this reclassification from A2 to A1 is consistent and very consistent with all the other surrounding zoning and uses within that property. So we believe that's consistent. Number two, to the extent to which property values in the subject are diminished by the existing zoning, again, this is an A2 to A1, again, this is A1's surrounding zoning. A2 is allowing a house to come on an agricultural piece of zoning. So it's a diminished effect. There's no real increase or decrease in value from an A2 to A1 because you're combining with an A1, it's agricultural property. And quite honestly, depending on, you know, what that effect is and what your use is going to be of it, if you were, you know, horse farming or, not horse farming, but if you're raising horses versus a dairy farm versus a pig farm, that can have different effects. In this particular case, you have this A1 piece of property then with an A2 here with a castle on it, that has a significant tax base, that has value and potentially value if it's allowed to conditional use, which then brings value to not only the property but to the surrounding properties as well. So the existing zoning has not significantly diminished the property, and I'm talking about the A1 now, A2 to A1 values of the property. In fact, it has had a positive effect. The current zoning restricts the property from being used for higher values because it is an A1, thereby lowering its market value compared to what could be if it was rezoned. However, the conditional use and the castle provide would have an increase in that value. Number three, the extent to which the public health, safety and welfare of the public are promoted by the existing zoning. The property is being changed from A2 to A1, which is a positive thing. The existing zoning promotes the public health, safety and welfare effectively. It keeps with the consistent use of the property. And the changing of the zoning would enhance these aspects based on the proposed use. And so by changing it from A2 to A1, you'd be allowing it to move into this larger piece, which then, if approved again, and the conditional use would allow for the additional, the usage of the condition. Again, we're not at the conditional use standards piece of it. We'll get to that next. But right now, as to the agricultural piece, and again, we're moving it from an A2 to A1, everything else is surrounded with A1. Number four, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant if the proposed zoning is denied. This is an interesting question. The impact to the public is de minimis because it's only 6.5 acres going from A2 to A1, not being felt anywhere. The impact is going to be to the applicant because in order to do the conditional use is that, you know, number A before B, or number one before two, in this case, conditional use can never happen unless you have an A1 zoning in order to do it on. So in order, if the A2 to A1 does not succeed, then it would have a greater impact on the applicant. So denying the proposed zoning would result in a significant hardship to the applicant, while the public would lose certain benefits. The public would lose out on potential benefits such as increased property values. And again, that's on the back end if the conditional use is approved. The suitability of the property for the purpose for which it is presently zoned. A1 is a very suitable and consistent with the rest of the surrounding property and is consistent and necessary for the conditional use. The property is suitable for its current zoning purpose. Number six, the length of time the property has been vacant as zoned, considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the subject property. Now, absent the castle, the property and the driveway coming in and in the back area, that's been sitting there vacant and being used by the homeowner. So the property has been vacant for a significant period, except for the castle. In this context, the surrounding land development, the prolonged vacancy suggests that rezoning and the conditional use could stimulate growth and better utilization of the land instead of just leaving vacant. The community need for the proposed use, number seven. There is a need for the proposed use. There's a clear community need for the proposed use. The lack of adequate amenities or services that the proposed zoning would provide, weddings, anniversary, senior birthdays are all good examples of using this landscape in an area where it has significant impact. Again, you know, the conditional use coming after the fact if allowed. Number eight, the consistency of the proposed amendment with the adopted comprehensive plan and the appropriateness of the comprehensive plan to the subject property. It's consistent and compatible. The proposed MAP amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan envisions future growth and development that aligns with the proposed change, zoning change, including incorporation of the big ideas from the beyond analysis. As we saw in the packet, there was various beyond analysis, big idea pieces that provided that support. The proposed amendment supports long-term growth for land use. Infrastructure and community development is outlined in the comprehensive plan. And I think that kind of, that hit home a bit because I felt it directly hit on point with the concern of the individual regarding the roads. And that is, okay, if 10 more cars from each direction, 20 cars, 50 cars total are now being traveled upon, it brings notice and recognition to that area so that, hey, you know what, maybe we really need to, you know, maybe we need to take some of the highway money and put it into this area. Maybe this becomes a need more important than another need. So maybe with the hope of this, it may designate a higher, an increase in need in this area for better improvement in the roads. So those are the eight standards within the reclassification from the A2 to A1. In addition to the MAP amendment and addressing these issues... In addition to the map amendment and addressing these issues, we have the conditional use permit. So the first one, we saw eight, and the conditional use, we have 10. And some of the other issues that we saw pop up, we're not so much with the standards on the first one, but some of the standards on the second one, whether or not they met that or didn't meet that. And we're going to go through those now. Approval standards for conditional use, that the petitioner has demonstrated, number one, has demonstrated the ability to meet any applicable standards contained in Chapter 16.56 Use Standards and 16.60 Site Development Standards. We have thoroughly demonstrated compliance with all applicable standards in Chapter 16.56 and 16.60. Documentation provided in detailed site plans, applications, and other relevant information adhering to the specified use and site development requirements. Further engaging any, in this case, the Harvard Fire Department and/or other individuals, we ask for the Swallow Water Conservation Report, anything that looks at this property and what impact it has and whether or not it's going to be able to do or not do the things that it's required to do. And again, we have demonstrated the ability to meet those. Number two.
We have to go through all this?
Yeah, we need to go through all this.
All right. Clarify. Number two.
But you don't need to turn around. If the audience can't hear, they can move up. You just need to address the board. I don't want you to get stiff neck.
It's the collar. Number two, the site shall be situated that the proposed use is compatible with the existing and planned future development of the area. Again, less than 1% of the property is being used for the conditional use. Again, assuming the 49 acres comes together, then we'd be, you know, to some, two points on acres in order to the conditional use. The proposed use is compatible with both existing and planned future developments in the area. The proposed use aligns with the local development plans and zoning net, ensuring consistency and surrounding use. The conditional use is using the landscape that's there in a small amount. That conditional use could have been made larger. In fact, it was designed to restrict and create a small private venue, and that's why you're seeing only five, 50 parking spaces, and that's why you have a very limited area to work with, a very small working space. Number three, that the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the conditional use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, or comfort, general welfare of the neighboring vicinity. Everything that is being used for the restrooms, tents, and all that stuff is all temporary. We're not, we're not putting permanency in there. We're trying to leave light footsteps so that when, you know, family comes in in the future, that there's nothing there. Again, light footsteps, we are, everything's temporary. The proposed conditional use has been evaluated and is not expected to be detrimental to public health, safety, and comfort. Again, we've identified alcohol does impair, we agree with the neighbors. However, someone is intoxicated and they see someone driving drunk, call the police. Number four, the conditional use shall not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of others and property in the immediate vicinity of other purposes already permitted. Again, we're trying to use the tranquil area atmosphere for a beautiful backdrop, for others to enjoy a relatively quiet private setting. We have shown that the conditional use will not adversely affect the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. Noise, traffic, and other potential disturbances have been addressed through the design and operation to ensure minimal impact on the adjacency. Again, we're using, you know, the back piece of the property away from neighbors, small venue setting, again, trying to create a private, exclusive space for people to use and have a wonderful family, senior party, wedding, whatever that may be for them. Number five, the conditional use shall not substantially diminish and impair the value of property within the neighborhood. We talked about it earlier in the previous condition, is to the second condition, the conditional use permit for operation of reception facility in our studio will not allow, would allow for business uses, would potentially help reduce the property tax for non-residential properties. The value of the existing property and the castle show the conditional use will not substantially diminish or impair property values. In fact, the proposed use shall enhance the property values by introducing new amenities or services. Again, increasing that business area as much as possible within an agricultural setting. Number six, the adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Minimal impact on the limited usage, adequate utilities, access roads are either in place to support the proposed use. Harvard Fire Department has confirmed their ability to provide services out there. We have various access points coming down Lincoln, coming off Maguire, coming off Alden, various ways to come in and enjoy the property. We've also hear and we respect and understand the concerns regarding the damages to the roads that are currently there and need repair. We hear that as well. Number seven, the adequate measures have been or would be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed to minimize traffic congestion hazard on the streets. Again, minimal impact based on limited usage. Again, we're talking maximum 50 cars, that's the max. Site plan has been reviewed to ensure that egress and egress are designed for that congestion. We've had, again, I hate to be repetitive, but we had the fire department out there to see as far as the stacking and traffic and learning to being able to move their truck around and ambulance in the event of a call. Number eight, the conditional use shall in all respects conform to the applicable regulations of the zoning district in which it is located. Again, it's within an A1 zoning with plenty of buffer and privacy, with mature trees and landscapes tucked up into the property. Again, that's why we're taking part of the property from the A2 and moving it to the A1, because this type of use is a conditional use permitted within the zoning ordinance. Very consistent, very applicable. Number nine, the conditional use is reasonable in the interest of the public welfare. Again, big idea number two that was spotted in the staff plat, the proposed reclassification would maintain open space and potential for agricultural use. The proposed condition use will allow for recreational opportunities while still remaining open for areas. The conditional use is in interest for the public welfare as it addresses the community need, provides economic benefits, enhances the quality of life for people. Public feedback for an event has been positive. Number 10, the adequate measures will be taken to provide protection to groundwater recharging groundwater quality. Again, big idea number one, the northern portion of the property is within a sensitive aquifer recharge area. Staff spotted that quickly, we had that looked at as well. Outside that area, the reception area, the driveway is the only thing that cuts through that's an existing driveway, which we're not touching, is an existing driveway that currently goes through, and that's the only impact. The reception area, the facility, the back, that is not within the area. So the site plans and review demonstrates the adequate measures will be implemented to protect the groundwater recharge areas, maintain groundwater quality. These measures include erosion control, stormwater management systems, and pollution prevention plans, like, which we don't, we're not doing anything because we're not bringing anything onto the property to cause any infusion into any of that. And based on having, we believe, met those standards, having presented evidence, having gone through the staff plat, having provided testimony at the staff plat hearing, we believe that we've met those standards, we've met those conditions, and we hope that we find that the zoning board finds in favor.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start with questions on my left, Mr. Stone.
Oh, fortunately. I think I have a few. First of all, what, have there been any objections by the township or the highway department yet?
No.
Okay. When did you purchase the property?
It was about in 1984 or 1985.
1984 or 1985. And so this has always been there and this is just a new...
Yes.
Idea.
Right.
Okay.
We have lived there since 1984.
Oh, okay. And it's the castle?
Yes.
Next, okay. Just for my benefit.
Yes.
Because we've talked about the castle, I'm not sure. There are a few in McHenry County, so we can differentiate. Okay, so your plans are to have small gatherings that up to 50 cars, 48 spaces, two of them handicap, so up to 140 people. That's a lot of people, but you, number one, do you have, no, that's the wrong person. Does this include, the 12 events, include the art studio and the yoga?
Yes.
Or are those separate?
So clarification, art studio is the term used in the ordinance. We have no plan, we have no, we had to use the word because that's what's in the ordinance. Art studio is the definition of what creates that piece.
So in this case, you're talking about something like a yoga class would be part of art that would be done there?
Correct.
Okay. When you're doing this, obviously, people have to come to you to say they want to do something on the property at a particular time and you have to give it the okay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like you're going out and acquiring a music venue or anything else that you want to bring onto the property, but it's strictly something that somebody else wants to have on your property?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me for doing this. Give me, give me, I'm sorry, I'm going to say I'm done for now, because I have the mark and I don't remember which way I had the mark. So if you could go ahead and I can come back at the end of this if that's possible?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Cozen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe my questions were provided to you through staff, at least that's my understanding. Some of them you may not be able to adjust as they contain two standards in the ordinance, which I'm hoping you could direct us to what gave you direction in that one.
Are you talking about the 60-day piece?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll start with that.
So that came out of the staff plat review back in January 2024, where Steve indicated, hey, this is going to be, because, and it's going to go, I'm going to tie the two together since I think you're the one who had the question. So we don't like the idea of temporary. We would love to have something permanent. We'd love to have permanent bathrooms, we'd love to have a permanent facility, we'd love to have permanency, we talked about that. We're not, we're not at that point. And so that's why we, that's why in the narrative you'll see, the intention would be eventually to get to the permanent, but we're not there yet. We don't know when it will be there.
We may not want permanent at all eventually. We see how it goes and then we will decide.
So there you go.
That's not our...
But as to the code part of it, it came out that, hey, this is temporary structure. So that section of the code was 15 dot 22 dot 010 regarding temporary structures and then the zoning individual being able to, so they would tell you, okay, it's up, okay, it's done, and you'd have to check in with them.
I'm sorry, so the 60 days is specifically cited in the ordinance?
I did not see, so as to that specific time, I did not see that specific day time in there. What I did see was reference to, reference to the temporary structures, that 15 dot 22 dot 010 was saying that, that it allows temporary structures and the building official is authorized to issue the permit. So that 60-day number, I have not seen that code section for that, so I don't have that clue.
So would you be adverse to if it was only 30 days or some other number?
Why 30 days and why not 90 days or 120 days?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Anna, maybe can you clarify?
Thank you. For the record, I've heard it's been senior planner. The 60-day reference actually is in the building code. Okay, so every time a temporary structure goes up, that is 150 square feet or larger in size requires a building permit. The building permit for temporary structures, according to Adam Wallin, is a maximum of 60 days. Like I said, that's in the building code. While this board may want to limit that, I don't know if you have the ability to limit a building code regulation.
And then also, Mr. Junie, would you introduce yourself, please? Because we didn't, we got your attorney at the beginning, but your, your name and your address as a petitioner.
My name is Henry Junie. I live at 17519 Lincoln Road in Harvard. I've been living there since 1984.
Okay, perfect. That's all we need.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cozen.
Thank you. So my intent to bring some focus is to clarify page 19 of 38 of the application. It says temporary structures, this is the last paragraph of that document, temporary structures such as tents will be removed after the event. And yet, there's also a statement said, no tent shall be up more than 60 days for any event. So that seems to be, what is, when does the clock start? As opposed to, are we just talking about the 50 by 50 tent?
I think maybe there's more question for Anna, maybe in the ordinance?
Okay. So like I said, the building code does allow from the time a permit is issued and the structure is erected up to 60 days, that permit will be, have a time limit on it. What the applicant's intent is in terms of removing it after each event versus the 60-day limit, that would be a question that they would be interested in.
I did pose that to them and as we got down that line of discussion of 10 days, 30 days, how many days, I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it becomes based on the need and cost expense piece. I mean, every time you put something up and take it down, there's a cost to it. And so we're trying to manage those pieces with events, and certainly, you know, when you're on the, on the end of your event schedule, certainly a lot sooner than later. So, you know, our position would be is we'd like to have it out as long as possible, you know, I understand your concern, but that would be our position.
And you have 12 events, and given the midwestern climate, do you think that would be about over eight months?
It's probably going to be between middle of June until the end of September, somewhere there.
So if you had the tent up for 60 days, it would be up during the entire time that you would have your events?
Well, not, in that situation, I mean, if it's June, July, then we'd have to take it down and then put it back up.
So it'd be up from June to September?
August.
End of September.
End of September, yeah, yes.
And going on, how long, again, are the prisons and the water stations to remain on site?
Those supposed to go the next, immediately following event, so.
That's the blocked area that you show where they will be?
That's on that lower area, yes. And so that came out of also, just for reference purposes, and that's why I wanted to add the evidence, it came out of the health department as far as timing on that. That comes out immediately after the event, so that's not sitting around.
Waste receptacles and dumpsters for the events?
We talked about...
Who's responsible for, I'm sorry.
We are responsible.
Yeah, but you may have vendors that take care of it as full service too.
But eventually, if they don't, then we are responsible. We will make sure that everything is...
That's fair.
Removed.
Again, the source for the potable water, everything being brought in?
Water bottles, or we can bring in like one of those water stations on a trailer, and that also will be removed after the event.
During the staff plat review, there was a discussion concerning a plan. Has such been provided to the fire district?
We had, we had them out, and we received a letter from them regarding it.
And that has been provided?
You should have it. If you don't, I brought an extra copy with.
On page 20 of 38 of the same document, there's a concluding statement, if you can expand upon that.
Again.
Identify it, since I don't know if the other members have the benefit of the question.
Yeah, you're talking about the points of doubt?
It says, "It is the intention of the applicant to use the temporary tent until such time as ready to erect a permanent structure."
Correct. And so, I mean... And so, I mean, what came out of the staff hearing was, well, you know, what did you intend to do? What do you intend to do? So we're testing the waters with this process, with this venue, with the weddings and doing these types of things. What, again, what we'd like to be able to do is have bathrooms. I mean, you'd like to have a bathroom and.
I'm not sure.
Now it isn't.
I'd like any, anything, anything permanent. Because we don't know if we are going to sell the property, we might not, the new buyer would not like to have permanent toilets or additional buildings. So it is a temporary situation.
So at the time that this was drafted, the mindset might have been, yeah, maybe we'll consider permanent in the future. That mindset might have changed to keeping it more temporary in the event thirty-seven.
You're aware that the conditional use goes for ten years?
Correct.
In terms of past experience, has there been any past experience with hosting or directing?
Private.
No, of this kind. Has your client had any past experience in hosting or?
Yes, private.
We had, last year, we had one wedding for our housekeeper. So there was no one exchange. It was like a family event and that was the first time. And everything went well. And the second one was this past Saturday on the A T U P.
Temporary.
Temporary use permit. We had a permit, so we had a wedding with a hundred twenty-six people. So that was our first wedding. And it was raining like crazy, a Saturday night. Anyway, the tent can withstand winds up to hundred fifty miles an hour. It's guaranteed by the manufacturer. So it was blowing like crazy, a lot of rain and the people, everybody left just before midnight. So everything was, was good. Especially considering the weather we had, it was horrific. But then everybody left on time and nobody was drunk. And we had about forty, forty cars in the parking lot. So it was a good experience.
So I take your client's answer that he is not in the business of, but relies on the direction of others to determine the success or failure of the event?
Could you repeat that?
I take it from your client's response that he is not professionally involved in hosting this, but is relying on the experience or the professionalism of others for this going forward?
Yeah, yeah. I am involved because it's my property. So even if I hire somebody that is professional, like a wedding planner, I will be working with them. But my idea eventually is to hire a wedding planner, a professional wedding planner that will conduct these events.
And I presume likewise, some type of person is familiar with yoga and other similar kind of activities?
Yeah.
We have. I don't know if she's here. Who is Bobby?
Do you want?
No, the question was do you?
Yeah, so Bobby is one of my neighbors and she has been doing yoga classes and for a long time. So she's experienced.
So we'll rely on others, individuals where needed?
Right.
We've just turned briefly, thank you, to the ordinance in terms of the standards. To highlight it, one B, can you just repeat or what evidence you submitted that the property values of this use will not be diminished to adjoining areas?
The, as far as not being diminished?
Right.
Okay. The fact that we're not causing any additional, any structures or anything to be put on the property that creates a diminutive effect. And it's, it's consistent with the A one, A two, A two to A one. And specifically regarding the values, what, you know, we haven't done anything to, you know, you're going from A two to A one and the property value, we're talking about six acres of property. It's a small piece of, I mean, it's going to, I mean, it's going to have no effect on the value.
And similarly, in that same section G, demonstrated community need?
Correct. So the need, and I think that's where he came up with the idea, so there's, there's no, there's no venue in that local area that provides for this type of opportunity to have, you know, whether it's a birthday or anniversary, wedding venue for private, you know, your private family to come out and have something like this. I know there's one, I know there's one in Harvard off of fourteen there. And there's some other ones, but having a unique setting like this, it's different and there is a need for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Immediately adjacent to the northeast to the subject property is a parcel marked A one C. Is that petitioner's land?
Yes.
What is the conditional use on that property?
Do you remember what the conditional use is on this piece?
No idea.
May I answer that?
Yeah, I think I asked.
That's a private cemetery that, as I understand it, is not in use with the.
Not yet.
Land is set aside and is strictly for the better family.
And there are apparently three other adjacent parcels that also say A one C. Can you tell me what those are?
I do not recall off the top of my head. I apologize.
Okay, but they are not, they're not a similar use?
No.
To what's being petitioned for?
That I can say.
I think the rest of my questions are going to be for staff, so I'll wait till the staff goes testimony.
Mr. Skirt?
I just have, during your presentation, you, you mentioned that, you know, the noise level could be disrupting to people around and that you would be agreeable to putting a time limit on bands and, you know, any type of noise like that. Would you be amenable to us including that in the conditions?
Absolutely not. If, if there is music, it's going to be between eight o'clock to eight PM to eleven PM.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. Sure.
You'd be amenable to a time limit?
It would be time.
I'm not saying no noise, I'm just saying, start here and here.
Add to the conditions, yes.
Yes, okay. So you said that there are, you have two weddings on this property, is that right?
Go ahead.
Okay. And do you have yoga classes on the property as well?
Not yet.
Oh, but you're planning on the odds?
Possibly.
Okay, because that was included in the narrative.
Hot yoga. It gets really hot during the day. Inside the dome.
Yeah, it does. So just from out of my own curiosity, on the aerial photo and on all your plans to survey, there's this one section in your C O P area that has a circle and two lines going through it. What is that?
The circle where it says C O P area, that's where the dome is now.
What dome? Do you have any, do you have any pictures of the dome?
The geodesic dome, that's the tent.
Do you have a picture of it at all?
I have it on my phone.
But you don't have it in the presentation?
I thought you had it.
I have never heard that there was a geodesic dome there.
Yeah, that's a tent, basically. The structure is, I had it for ten years.
Okay.
I used to have this dome. It was, and where you see the picture, it was on the left side of the property. You see the circle on that side?
Yeah.
And used to be a bird aviary.
Okay.
So I had a net, so I used to keep my birds in there. And then I decided to move it last year. So with a crane, we moved the dome to the C O P area. So that's where it is now.
Okay.
You have a picture?
Yep.
Oh.
Here, let me bring it to you.
So the dome and?
The dome is, is here. This is, it's already furnished and.
Furnished with what?
With tables.
Oh, I see. So it's set up?
Dance floor.
To set it up for the wedding.
It's already set up.
So that's already set up? So then what purpose would the tent have?
That's the tent.
Oh, that's the tent?
That's the tent.
But that stays up all the time?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
The cover, I wish it would stay up all the time.
Okay, talk louder, sorry.
At one point, what they were saying is that the cover has to be removed every sixty days. The cover, not the old structure.
The framework is permanent, but the cover is temporary?
It's temporary. So if we do have to remove it, to remove the cover, then we will do it.
Okay. All right. So all this time, I thought that you were going to have a tent brought in and erected and taken down.
No, this is, I don't know why it was.
Because I didn't know there was a geodesic dome, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, it is a geodesic dome. With two inch steel framing, steel pipe framing.
Okay.
So it's really heavy duty.
Okay. So I think that that is all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schneffler?
I have to, we're not really supposed to make comments during this portion of our meeting. I don't have any further questions, but I wish I would have known this from very beginning in the case.
About the dome?
Yeah.
Well, it's been there forever. I mean, when we had meetings, we mentioned the dome.
For this board though, this board wasn't at those meetings. So if anything that you can bring up that shows, you know, the actual facility that you're using, what it looks like, you know, would be helpful.
Have you got a zoning board hearing before or is this the first one?
This is first. No, this is, yeah.
Okay. And we've never heard of it?
We met a lot of people, several times.
Okay, that's all you have here?
Mr. Jones?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I want to compliment Mr. Militello on his presentation. I thought you were very thorough. One of my advantages of being the last chair at this long table, most of my questions were asked by my colleagues ahead of time. So they saved me a lot of time. And I especially like being after Charlie Eldredge because he's the, he's the orator of our whole group and he presents things so eloquently. Like I said, being here at the end and then your presentation with your, your notepad there with the dome tent, that was kind of enlightening. I was unaware that it was a metal frame structure like that and furnished inside it, you know. When you hear the word tent, you think a bunch of guys show up in a truck and four hours later you go, and then they come tomorrow and tear it all down. That's a pretty cool structure. The need for a venue like this, I can understand. I live in Coral Township and I'm in a rural neighborhood. I hosted my own daughter's wedding in my backyard in a, in a big hole barn. Our local venues that we have had in Coral Township, we've lost about four of them in the past ten years. The American Legion closed.
You got to leave this to questions.
Well, they're, I understand your need and apparently you're trying to fill it. Question though, is if this is successful, you plan on putting in more permanent plum facility? If it's successful, the dome tent is a tent?
No, that's it. That's, that's the only structure.
I think we've moved.
That will be the only structure?
That would be the only structure.
I think we've moved from that whole permanent piece to temporary.
Okay.
I don't want to see, I'm overlooking at this. It looks beautiful, but I don't want to see any other. I like to be out there in nature and enjoy the tranquility and I understand. So some of the people don't like to hear, maybe twice a month, it's going to be maybe twice a month, to hear loud music. But it's going to be for short time and some of them might enjoy the music.
Will all of the music be inside that structure? No outdoor?
It will be inside the structure.
No outdoor bands?
No, no outside. And I'm very strict with this. I, I really want to keep it as quiet as possible and I will not allow to have music after eleven o'clock.
Thank you.
Eleven PM, thank you.
Okay, Anna, would you bring up this, I have some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you bring up the front? So I just want to try and clarify a little bit. So, so the, the structure that's in the lower left-hand side, that was your aviary, that is the dome structure. You decided, when you didn't use it for an aviary anymore, decided to move it in the center of the C U P area.
Go ahead.
And you have it covered and that's the covering that will have to be removed every sixty days or whenever, just to remove that covering, but the basic structure will remain.
Correct.
And you have that set up so that you have a dance floor inside, you have nice tables for wedding, you have a place so a band could set up or a caterer could come in and bring food, correct?
Correct.
And everything will be contained in that dome? Except for the washrooms that you bring in or if you have to bring in a quart of.
Excuse me, is it a band shell or is it a dome?
You can ask your question in a little bit. Right now it's the time for the board to ask questions?
Well, he might ask that one.
Well, okay. So, so this, this structure, this dome is where anything that you have, whether it be a yoga retreat or a yoga class or a wedding reception, all that will be contained within this, this dome that was your aviary previously?
Go ahead.
Correct?
Yes.
And then the parking that is just to the right of where that is, that narrow strip, that's where everyone is going to park and then they'll just walk up into that domed area?
Yes.
And, and the only time there will be music per your comments is, would be eight to eleven PM when you have a wedding reception? Okay. Ms. Dunn?
Okay. So how do you plan to mitigate any particularly loud noises that arise? In other words, if you start getting, or we start getting complaints, how do you plan, is, can you mitigate it? Now that you've got a dome, is everything contained already within that structure that you wouldn't hear anything outside of it or?
No, there is, there is no music outside. It's going to be contained within the dome.
And if that music was loud, the people inside would be like ear splitting?
Right.
Right? So it wouldn't be any louder than what they could handle inside the dome, correct?
Okay, that, that was one. And, oh, wait until comments for this part. Thank you.
Just staff have any questions?
I do have two questions today. So for our technical aspects here, you called up a website as your testimony here. Would you give the website address, please?
Yes.
Castlepark.biz.
Castlepark?
Castlepark.biz, B I Z.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The second question that I had, this is a follow-up to. The second eh, question that I had, eh, this is a follow-up to a conversation that we had by email a month or two ago. The site plan is indicating that the, eh, temporary structure is a fifty by fifty area. The website castlepark.biz as of last night continued to show this as being advertised as a sixty by sixty. Can you please clarify what the dimensions are?
That's a sixty-foot diameter geodesic dome.
Okay. So is the site plan accurate in the fifty by fifty?
It, it is where the, yes.
Okay. So the dimensions of fifty by fifty are accurate?
It's sixty feet, it's not fifty.
Okay.
It's, it's, the diameter is sixty feet, the diameter...
And yet your site plan is saying fifty by fifty, which is smaller?
It's about, if, if, eh, a sixty-foot dome, the area of a sixty-foot eh, diameter dome is, I believe is the same as a fifty, is two thousand five hundred square feet. So a fifty by fifty tent is two thousand five hundred square feet.
Square of the fifty. That's what you're saying?
But the, the, the surface is the same, about the same.
Fraction?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, why don't you get that clarified? Thank you. Those were my questions.
Okay.
Okay. I have one more question for the petitioner and I'm looking at Anna as well. Were you planning on putting up any lights for these events? Having any lights on the...
The lights are eh, inside.
Okay, but like for parking?
Yeah, we have some light outside.
Can you describe the lights that you have outside?
There are lights eh, and the, and the tower of the house, there are some big lights. So when we turn those lights on, the whole area is lit up.
Okay, so they're like spots or whatever, yeah?
Yeah.
So, just to follow up that point. On, on the site plan, do you have any parking lot lights currently?
No, no, you, it is, you can see, you don't...
So you can see from, from the tower?
Right. You can, the old area, the old, one side of the C U P area is going to be all lit up.
Okay, so...
Including the parking lot.
Do you turn these lights on normally or do you only for events?
No, I, I tested a few times to see how much, eh, if it was sufficient. And then we had them on, it is Saturday until people left, so at midnight, everything was off.
Okay. So you wouldn't mind if we put a time limit on the lights as well?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
But the time limit may be of until midnight.
You're letting people get out?
People get out and clean up a little.
Yeah. Okay. Anna, does that seem reasonable to ask for conditions regarding lights and noise?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I asked if it was reasonable to have conditions regarding lights and noise. Okay, so now we're to the point where any member of the public can ask a question. So if you would like to and you've signed in, I would ask you to come up. You have to give your name and address and then I just use the timer on my phone to give you your three minutes. And eh, the question should be specific to his testimony, to this use. And eh, so I welcome you, anyone that would like to ask a question, to come on up and do so. You have to come up here and then introduce yourself.
Right.
Eh, just come on up here to the front, either way.
The reason why we are asking you to come forward is our microphone is actually in the ceiling, so we just need to have you somewhat closer so I can pick you up.
My name's Jack Markowski, I live at fifty-three eighteen Irish and I've been there for probably climbing close to thirty years. I find it a little suspect that you have pictures of your...
You have to ask a question. You're asking a question, right?
Is it a dome or is it a band shell? How much would contain the noise? How much will it contain the noise?
This is the dome.
And where do you gain entrance to this dome?
That hole.
That's the only way?
Yeah, there are two, one across the hotel.
So if there's a hole here and a hole there?
Okay.
And then this is the cover.
And what kind of guarantee can you give me that that's gonna block the noise for traveling five, six, seven hundred yards?
It's not going to block completely.
Yeah, I know.
Like eh, eh, I hear noise all the time, I'm out there, I hear noises all the time, people shooting.
Do you hear music coming from a wedding venue?
I hear people shooting.
There, you bring up another point.
And I drain, I never complain because I enjoy shooting. So sometime I hear them shooting from three o'clock until seven P M., three, four hours in a row.
So what's your problem? You don't like the Senate Amendment?
No, I, 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 I have nothing to say.
So it's too respectful here, let's, the questions are regarding the testimony.
Okay, question is this, there are dozens of people who live around that area that are asking what we pay you for shootings for. So how long until we start getting complaints from your venue?
I answered, the question's on the testimony. If you're gonna get into some other area, you're gonna have...
I didn't complain about shooting. I kind of like it, I hear people shooting when they go hunting, they train their hunting dogs. I'm happy, I don't complain.
But how long until we start getting complaints from the people who, who have hired your, or rented your property?
I don't know, how do we know?
Well, you know, you go to number three. Go to the third article on your, eh, how you're meeting all of the county's eh, requirements.
The conditional use?
There you go, whoa, right there. Or the general welfare of the neighboring vicinity. How long until you start, your people that are renting your property, how long until they start complaining, complaining about the noise from the people who have lived there for thirty years? How long is that intended?
Sir, sir, that's not regarding his testimony about his use. You can ask a question about his use.
So we just don't answer, we, we, we can't ask questions unless he testified to it?
You can ask questions regarding his use.
There would be the use.
May, could, could you just clarify, can I, I'll try to help answer whatever you, what, what's the question?
I mean, you, are you aware of the fact that, I'm sure Henry is, that, that there's an eighty-acre dog training facility alongside this venue?
I can appreciate that, but that's not the force today, I'm just trying to understand the question.
How long until the people who have lived there for a long time and enjoyed shooting guns on their property? Okay, got it?
I got it.
How long until we start getting complaints from the county that are generated from his customers?
Okay, I think that's out of line. That's not to do, that's not anything to do with this.
And it has everything to do with it. You're turning blind eyes at people that live in the immediate area.
You can sit down or I can call security. Which do you prefer? Your time is up, sir.
Call.
Anna, would you call security?
Already done.
All right.
This is a kangaroo court. This is silly. Goodbye.
Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question of the testimony of this petitioner?
Yes.
Come on up, sir. John Stichett, one seventy-four oh five Green Road. Okay. There is plenty of noise, I know you had a couple of venues, Mr. Juney. The music goes and it's boom, 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 the bass, from midnight and later. When you say you have parking for forty-eight vehicles and two handicap spots, now it's pretty vague. Forty-eight vehicles, it could be ten buses out of the forty-eight. Bring in thirty, forty, fifty people on a bus. Eh, half of the drive, school bus, part-time, and they rent, people from weddings, they, venues, they rent school buses to bring in large groups of people. So with the forty-eight, it doesn't say forty-eight passenger cars. If you have fifty vehicles...
I, I think it does, I think it's cars.
Can I, can I respond, Mr. Stichett?
Because they, they didn't state. But again...
And it's a limit to how many people then can be there based on the parking?
The site plan is saying, these are the areas for parking, I understand your point on a bus. And these are the spots for parking. It's not designed for a bus, or bus turnaround. But, but more important piece on that is there's forty-eight spots and then two spots for handicap and we're gonna show that they are, so they are on paved. But this is a piece to your point, is that eh, the max, the max that we would have is a hundred and fifty people surrounded.
It's not going to be a hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry, a hundred and forty people.
It's going to be what we have, the way we have set up, set up. I don't want more than a hundred and fifty people.
Because, you know...
Each event.
Because...
Maximum, I'm sorry, maximum, I can push it up to a hundred and forty. But it might be one time. I don't like to have things out of place.
Let me ask you one thing, Mr. Juney. Since you have your residence for sale right now, who oversees this venue when you sell?
Please no talking in the background, we're trying to record this hearing.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I might not tell it.
Well, no, but it doesn't matter. But it's for sale, but if you do sell it, you said, well, I'm gonna oversee it, make sure the people, they start at this time, end at this time, who's an overseer? Once you get the go, if it's a go, there is a trap shoot. Who's gonna enforce it? There's hardly no enforcement, the, the county hardly comes on there. The, the trash on the road when somebody has a, a party or something, who's, who cleans up?
Okay, let him answer your question.
Regarding trash, we've addressed that at the hearing, we'll take care of trash, making sure the place is clean. As far as...
Not that place, I'm talking about the surrounding, all the roads, the access points, because I've been out there fifty-two years. Fifty-two years, I'm a pro fly, so I'm not even, maybe half a mile from Mr. Juney's.
Let him answer the question.
Our property abuts each other except for the piece he sold off to Iversons.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I don't know who's throwing the trash out there, but we'll have enough receptacles at the facility so that if people have garbage in the cars that they want to throw out, they can do it in the receptacles instead of the road. But, but eh, I'm sorry, what was the first part of your question, because I don't want to lose track of that?
Well, the, the first part was on the vehicles. I said, when it says just forty-eight vehicles, it was, you know, again, vehicle could be a semi-truck.
No, forty-eight vehicles are cars, yeah.
Again, a noise factor is a big factor, but like I said, who enforces it?
Okay, your time is up. Your time is up.
Oh. Oh, well, so regarding the, eh, eh, ten-year limitation on the conditional use, so this conditional use will be for only ten years, so it's not for a lifetime. It's only valid a time.
Ten years, so it's a lifetime.
Does anyone else like to speak? Okay, please come up and identify yourself. And remember, this is only questions, this is not comments, that's later in the hearing.
Eh, my name is Debbie Extrum, I live at seventeen two oh eight Lincoln Road. My question is regarding, eh, you were stating that you plan to have no more than a dozen events a year. But is that stipulated by the conditional use permit? Or could they choose if it's successful to have a lot more than twelve? And it ties, that question also ties into what the previous gentleman brought up. I know that the property is for sale and if it is sold, if the new owner wanted to have more than a dozen and have a lot of events, would they be allowed to do that? In other words, does this permit itself limited to twelve or is that just their saying they don't want to do more than twelve, which is fine? But they could change their mind and/or subsequent owners could change their mind and have a full-time kind of a event thing going on? And just for the record, I appreciate that they're willing to limit the, the time they allow the music, but it is quite, I mean, we all heard it, the two, the one from last year and, and the recent, we can't hear it. So could that be changed by a subsequent owner where they're gonna have them allow music till one o'clock in the morning or whatever, because it is quite audible, I mean, we, we all heard it. And I'm not complaining, anybody wants to have a party once in a while, I, you know, I don't want to stop people from that, but since this is turning into more than just you having a party for your housekeeper, you know, the, the volume and the length of time and the multi-number of events would be in question, especially with a new owner, if that were to take place.
Good, good question, so the conditional use, and I think that was brought up from one of the chair members, was the lim, the limitation be actually being part of the conditional use? So eh, if it was sold, that owner would have, the new owner would have to abide by the time slots. As far as the number of events, eh, that, that's, at this point in time, that's Henry's brothers, that's what, how he hoped to only have twelve. You know, if somebody else did buy it, they could do something different or nothing at all, they may not even want to have it.
But if they did, they could then literally have something every weekend if they want to turn it into a kind of a, do that.
There's no limitation on... There's no limitation on, no limitation on the number.
The number of venues per year, or events per year. The yoga obviously isn't gonna bother anybody, nobody's gonna even know they're doing yoga in there. Just, you know, the wedding kind of event thing. So a subsequent owner buying that property could have way more than a dozen, even if, if Henry, you know, I, I mean, if he only wants to have a dozen, that's one thing, but somebody else might want to have more, then they would be able to do that.
How many would you like us to have?
No, no, no.
No, I'm saying, how many eh, eh, events would you be comfortable to have? Because maybe if that's what, I mean, if that's a question, if I do sell, then we can probably, under contract, if we do sell the house, we can have a contract that they cannot have more than so many events.
Anna, is that something that we do?
I don't think you can. Well, I just don't know. I'm just asking, what is possible if someone else gets it?
I'm willing to do, I'm willing to do that and look into, if, if somebody buys the place, to say, okay, there is a, there is a conditional use permit, you can use this dome and you can have only so many eh, eh, events.
Well, I appreciate that you're willing to do that, but I...
Your time is up.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't know that they...
We'll, we'll address that later. Okay, does anyone else have a question?
I just have a quick question from the board and for the community.
Please, please come up and I don't...
That's fine. It's not necessarily pertaining to this. I just have to, I'll pick up my mom from a chemotherapy appointment and I do have a comment and I was hoping that the board and the public would allow me to share that comment before I do have to leave, since I will not have the opportunity to present it while everybody else is getting there.
Okay, you go ahead, I'll let you...
Thank you. My name's Caitlin Davis, I live on one eight eight zero one Lincoln Road. As I mentioned, me and my family do live on Lincoln Road and the castle that has always been a curiosity in mine and my family's and as you pass by, everyone can see that the property is very beautiful, very well-pat. I received a letter on my mailbox asking to come to this public meeting to speak against having the castle being zoned as a wedding venue. But I chose to attend my first public hearing for Harvard because I do not agree with the letter. But today I'd rather discuss why the zoning of a wedding venue would be beneficial for our community. If the castle is approved for zoning for Harvard, it will bring the economic boost to our local businesses such as the bed and breakfast that is located on Lincoln Road, as well as local restaurants, hotels, florists, photographers and any other businesses that might bring new customers. Another aspect I would ask you to consider is it would provide a convenient and beautiful location for residents to celebrate their special occasions locally, especially in times of economic hardship. Some concerns of those that are against the zoning is it will bring more traffic to our roadways, loud music that will affect the atmosphere and alcohol-related accidents. If there isn't a wedding venue so, to have a celebration, people may choose, as discussed, to host in their own backyards. We've all heard musics from kincineras, graduations, birthdays and many other celebrations that are held. During those celebrations, me and my family typically have never heard noise past an unreasonable time and that's only if we go outside. Those reasons should not prevent anybody from having a celebration. Not to mention there are other similar businesses on Lincoln Road such as the bed and breakfast that house people, that they can also consume alcohol and it also brings traffic to the street, but also, like I mentioned, it could bring more business to them as well. Henry has brought together a community within our small neighborhood. If it wasn't for him, I would not know basically anybody within my neighborhood. I've seen all different ages, backgrounds and even people from different countries all come together to enjoy the outdoors. This is just another opportunity to bring more people to learn about Lincoln Road, Harvard and our community members. I met him very recently and learned how respectable, helpful and knowledgeable he is. He's professional and reasonable and although I don't know him as well as some other neighbors do, he's always gone out of his way to talk to me and ensure me and my family are doing good. With that, I ask you to please critically think about the benefits of having a wedding venue that's been brought to our community for the reasons mentioned above. There are many other issues that should be addressed that are happening on Lincoln Road before we start considering this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope your mom's doing okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to ask a question at this time? Yes, please come up and identify yourself. Yes, please come up and identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Tracy Scottman, 17120 Lincoln Road. I live at my mother's, my residence I grew up in, my mother was a Joanne Nielsen. I've, like John Stachek, been there for 52 years. We are adjacent to the north end of the Juney property, and we are next door to the Extrum's. One thing that was noted was the noise.
This is a question, right?
I know, we heard it over the thunderstorm and 70 mile an hour winds. So my quest, one question I had is what can you do to mitigate some of the noise affecting us that didn't go till midnight on Saturday? Could you erect buffers or something like that within the structure to help decrease the noise? Because that, that's an issue for neighbors.
Some neighbors may, may like the music. But anyway, not to.
I have a feeling.
Is this, is this your trick, Tracy? Is this so? We can't have everybody talking at once.
I can't have it until 11 o'clock.
This is right there.
So you're about 2,000 feet.
She's right there now.
You're about 2,000 feet away.
Yeah.
You're about 2,000 feet as the, as the crow flies. So if, if the dome hole, so to speak, is right there, and if the music is going out directly that way, as the crow flies, it goes directly towards you.
Of course.
I mean, let's be honest, I mean, I just.
Yeah, and the wind was really blowing that way, with the storm that we had Saturday.
Uh huh, we could hear the music over the storm.
No, I'm sure you can, because, because the wind was blowing your direction. From the dome was going your direction.
To be honest with you, I, I wrote a text message saying, I wonder what the decibels are like in the building, if we could hear it over the storm.
The what? Can you repeat it?
I was, I wrote a text message out to a family saying, I wonder, I wonder if everyone's eardrums are okay in the studio, if we can hear it over the storm.
So the wind, the wind didn't help with carrying that along the way? But you, from a visual standpoint, based on that circle piece, that opening is going straight as the crow flies right towards your property, so, and that's about 2,000 feet?
I, I know Stacheks could hear it in their property, and they're even farther away. So that, that was one question. I, the, Debbie brought up on the issue of 12 events per year, is that something you could stipulate within the conditional use? I also noted that it says 12, you said 12 per year, but that was June through September. So that's nearly every weekend.
No.
Over the summer.
No.
If you're gonna put 12 in between June, the middle of June to September, that's almost every weekend.
Two times, two times, three times, and more than most. It might not have, we might have five of them, five.
Just doing that, okay, I know my time's up.
So next person, anyone else have questions?
Richard Miller, I live at 5610 Irish. Now, one of the criteria was not to repeat things, but again, the sound kinda shrugged it off as wind direction. Oh, I'm west of you, and I could clearly hear the music throughout the storm, but all my windows closed because the AC is on. So getting back to this dome that is supposed to contain them, what kind of material? Is it acoustic material that would block this?
It's not going to block the music, it is just, it's like a tent.
You want to block it from the rest of the neighborhood, we don't want to listen to it.
You don't want to listen, I have to listen to a lot of noises when I live out there, like I was saying before.
These are private property owners enjoying their property. You are talking a commercial.
Yeah, yeah, you're asking a question, he answered it.
How did he answer?
Well, and he said he'd be willing to limit it to eight to 11, and, you know, he's.
Was that the county's ordinance on noise level? It is 11?
The county doesn't have an ordinance, that's something that this board can put a limit on, on the conditional use permit?
Okay.
And the petitioner is reasonable, he's saying that he would agree to eight to 11, and so we will put a condition on it for that.
I think.
So again.
The current, the concern, I think, still stands.
All right, do you have a question that hasn't been addressed?
Yes, I do, so moving on. During attorney's presentation, he had mentioned the road, okay? Well, being an Irish, I can almost guarantee you through common sense, we're lying between Charles Alden and Ralph Fullteen, there's McGuire. We're gonna see the majority of that traffic.
What's the question?
The question is, he's deferring the road condition and the potential of having intoxicated drivers to the municipal, not the municipalities, but the authorities, sheriff and the road commissioner. Lincoln is a gravel road, okay? So that traffic going down Lincoln is gonna stir dust, it's also creates noise.
You're making a statement, sir, you've got to ask a question at this time.
Are you going to do anything to remedy these, or minimize these conditions?
As far as the road's concerned, we're very sympathetic to that. The way I understand, just to confirm, you said you're on Irish Lane?
Yes.
Irish Lane is the northbound, uh, north and southbound road, and then you have McGuire Road, again, east-west to the south end, you have Lincoln. And so you're, you're an artery between Lincoln and McGuire, correct? As far as the roads, you have Harland and Alden, both have highway commissioners. We're, we're on the same predicament, we want those roads improved, we want whatever monies that could be allocated to help make them better.
You're the ones creating the increase in traffic.
How many cars did you have this past Saturday going through Irish Lane?
No, it was storming, I didn't come.
But not too many.
Okay.
We had 38 cars.
Time is up.
150 people.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, come on up if you have a next question.
Hi, I'm Sam Scottman, I reside at, Sam, Scottman. I reside at 17120 Lincoln Road with my grandmother and my mother. One of the questions that I have is, what is the demographic of the people who will be having weddings? Because if they are in the upper demographics and they do not reside in this area, how would they bring awareness to our roads?
The demographics, they're gonna be anybody who has a special event that would like to, whether it's an anniversary, your grandparents, seniors, or whatever, a wedding, so the demographics.
I think, I think I misunderstood that. What is the economic status of the people who will be having weddings? From your website, you have $9,500 just for 14 hours at your venue. To me, that stands as a higher economic status, and that does not stand with a country status of the lower class that would actually need the awareness here.
Great, great question, so, so it's, it's about pricing the venue for the situation? And so a lot of times, we'll be below another venue's price because they have a lot more amenities. And so if, if, I don't, you know, if somebody has a wedding, and you have had a sister or a family member set price out for a hall for a wedding, you could be $20,000, $30,000 in, in, in a venue, it, it would be split, which is different.
The question is, I, I would like for neighbors to be able to use the facility, and I would, I'm willing to say, you have a birthday party, anniversary, whatever, graduation, you send me, you call me, you say, look, can we use your facility? We have 30 people, 20 people, 50 people. I would give you a really good price because you live in the vicinity. I, I was going, so that's one point. Now, I was going to increase my prices because the more expensive and less events we're going to have. So if I can raise the price up to $25,000 per, per event, instead of 12 events, we might only have five events or six events, which I would like. The less event, I'm happy to also. I am also happy if we have less events, I will increase the price. So this is a testing that I have with $9,500. But if you leave, where do you say you live?
Um, for.
Where do you live?
I live in, at 17120, same as.
Okay, okay, you're right there.
Just around the corner.
I know, I know, next to them. So if you say you want to have an event during the week, or even a Saturday or Sunday, and we don't have anybody's, anything scheduled, I would be happy to have you guys, to have a party there, a barbecue, and I, I would give you a really good deal.
But don't tell the people that are on the website.
So, in the end, I think it's going to be good for the community, because I would like to have people come over and, and, and enjoy the place.
Okay, time's up, any other questions? Okay, then we're gonna move on to the staff report, Ms. Kurtzman.
Good afternoon. Okay, the request, as we know, consists of two components. There is the request for a reclassification from the A2 to the A1, and then superimposed upon a portion of that requested reclassification is a conditional use permit for two different types of conditional uses. One is for the resort, and the other is for a, what we classify as a, our studio. Previously noted, that is a terminology of our organs. So for the zoning, the zoning in the area is entirely A1, with the exception of the A2 that is owned by the Juney family. There are a couple of conditional uses that are also in that area. Surrounding land uses, predominantly agricultural or not developed. There are some single-family houses that are in the area noted in the slides here, primarily to the west, as depicted on the map here. Future land use, again, we are seeing this area as a combination of agricultural and of our, really sensitive areas. Oops, wrong place there. There have been a number of questions that have been asked in terms of potential conditions. Yes, this board may recommend conditions in terms of time limits, both in terms of the music venues, time of year, time for the event to occur throughout the day. You can change that from weekend hours to weekday hours if you would like. There was another question that was asked.
Number of events.
Number of events, thank you. Yes, you can place a condition on number of events. Quite frankly, enforcement of that particular condition would be somewhat problematic unless we could come up with some way of having documentation saying that a event was held, that we would document that, we're not gonna send staff out every weekend to double check that.
And can you verify that those parking spaces, it would not be like for 50 buses that would be coming in?
So according to the site plan, they've had to mention those for a standard passenger vehicle. So it was not the intent that that would be for bus parking. Could there be bus parking crossing some of those? I won't be able to go out there and say yes or no to that, but it could.
But in fact, the bus would take up several of those parking spaces.
Exactly, exactly.
A single space is not sufficient for a bus.
Yeah, it'd be like parking in a Walmart parking lot with trucks crossing several of the lots, all those lots.
No turnaround for large vehicles.
Well, according to the testimony presented, the fire department has indicated that they have adequate means of getting a vehicle in and out of there. So if a, if a private vehicle get in and out, presumably the bus could.
I'm speaking about buses, because still they have to have a turnaround, it's possibly different. I'm talking about turnaround, I'm sorry.
I'm thinking that there are a couple of sides.
Okay, let's just go down the table, if anyone has questions for honor. I do. We've already talked about what is the property, we're already A1 to begin with, could they just ask for a CUP?
If the property was already A1, yes, it would be simply a request for the CUP.
Okay, and, and you've already answered my other one, I was going to ask about getting a separate permit for each one, but that would be as a temporary facility, not as a permanent.
So our code is written that we have temporary use permits that for the type of events being discussed here are limited to three per year. As the, and that we can track, because they actually have to come in for a permit. As they are asking for a conditional use permit, a separate permit would not be required.
Okay, which is why there could be a problem with enforcement of that particular condition. Okay, thank you. Does the opposing have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I seem to be a little behind the eight ball here with the dome. It wasn't until the reference of the word castle that I realized the architectural gem that is sitting out there, because it was not in the application form. The structure's been under construction and architecturally well-known. In fact, even displayed on WGS recently. My specific question is, during the course of construction of that gem, has at any time the county building, or is there a record of the county building program ever signing the property for failing to abide by any of the instances of the county building?
I don't recall that.
Thank you for the question.
Ms. Jones, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm not used to a conditional use for this kind of use without any kind of permanent facilities for them, so I have questions relating to that. With regard to the use of alcoholic beverages, will they get one permit a year? Or will they have to get, since they aren't really providing it, I presumably their caterer would be providing such things. They have to have a caterer with a license to provide alcoholic beverage? Or would there be a permit required for them, or how does that work?
So the alcoholic beverage requirements are actually administered through the administration office. It's my understanding that the vendor would be the one that would have the license, and I believe that they would have to do it for each event for this site. So each vendor that attends this would have to get a separate liquor license, that's my understanding.
For each event they were holding at this facility?
Correct.
But it would be the, the people providing the liquor sales or distribution, it would be doing it?
They'd be the responsible.
Not Mr. Juney.
That's my understanding.
And with regard to the portable washing stands and toilets, those are required to be put up and taken down within what kind of time period relating to an event?
So the environmental health department monitors the portable restrooms. They have not indicated to me that I'm aware of that there is a specific timeframe that it has to be removed other than immediately following the event. Now, if the event's on a Friday night, the vendor might not come out till Monday. I'm certain that a couple of departments aren't gonna have a huge issue with that.
But if they came out two weeks later, they would.
They would have a problem with that, I would imagine, I would.
With regard to the outdoor lighting, the, we do have ordinances for commercial. we do have ordinances for commercial lighting that this would not seem to meet.
That's correct.
Is there, what should be or could be done? I mean, because we seem to be having, first place, the lighting is off-site. It's not within the conditional use.
Right.
And second, it is not, doesn't meet the standards for avoiding light pollution.
Right.
Would there be a requirement that they provide lighting on the parking lot, number one, and number two, that they avoid using off-site parking, lighting onto the side?
Okay, so the first question, I'm not aware of anything that actually requires the lighting to be on your property, one way or the other. If they choose to provide lighting, then it needs to meet the code requirements. We could certainly cite them for having the lighting unshielded, pointing downwards like that. I would certainly hope that we would be working with the Julies before we got to that stage to address that lighting.
Because there's sort of foot level lighting that would probably be entirely...
They certainly get the, again, the Walmart, Walgreens, the solar lighting, things that you can put into the ground, that does not require a permit from us.
And electricity. It sounds from what he said, although I'm not sure that any of us know, that that is being provided probably from his electric meter off-site.
So, the metering is not something that we would be concerned of in terms of the CUP?
Is there any requirement that if they are providing electricity in the CUP, that it be provided by the holder of the CUP or by the property in some fashion? It'll be a separate meter.
So, there's nothing that I'm aware of in our building code that would require a separate meter for the CUP area or any of the events that are occurring there. So, as long as they have proper electrical per our building code, where it's situated on the property is not a function of the site plan or the purview of this board.
Okay. And with regard to enforcement of the number of events, while the department isn't in a position proactively to monitor that, if someone who was concerned about it in the public kept track and came in with a complaint that they had, said that they were, we had a condition that they have twelve, and they'd have twenty-five, the county would respond to that.
Would respond to that. It would be difficult for us to go back and prove it. Someone would have to provide, prove per the zoning enforcement officer.
If somebody cared about enough enough, they could do that.
They could document it, they could document it, yes.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Kurtzman, questions?
We were talking about the possibility of conditions for lights and sound. And can, we can add one for a limited amount of events per year as well?
You can, yes. What I'm saying is it would be difficult for us to enforce.
Okay, but it would be something that's in lighting somewhere.
Right.
And you're talking about the lighting, you said if there were, that this lighting wouldn't be in accordance with our UDO as far as, you know, down lighting and so on and so forth. And you could work with the petitioner regarding the lighting for the site.
That's correct.
But then you were mentioning something about using the solar lights in pathways and so on and so forth, that we've also... But then if we have a limit on how long the lights are on, you can't kind of limit those solar lights, you know?
No, but unless there's solar lights out there that I'm not aware of that are being able to go off of this property, I mean, you're talking hundreds of feet for these little solar things.
Yeah.
I don't know that, see those from adjacent properties.
Okay, I think I know what you're saying. Okay, all right, that's all, thank you.
No questions?
No questions.
So, my question first is the lighting and the downward lighting that he said he has in the tower, that sounds like a floodlight or something like that to cover that area. If he has enough of a buffer, if all, you know, the land, if he has forty acres around that light, is that as much of a concern if it's all his property?
I don't recall the lighting standards well enough to tell you whether we would have to have him change his lighting or if it's adequate the way he's described it. So, I don't know the answer to your question.
So, that wouldn't be something we necessarily have to address? You would just work with him, and if it's adequate, it'd be fine? And otherwise, you would address it?
I think that that is something that, as long as it's meeting code requirements, it'll be fine. I don't think that we need to add an additional condition here.
Okay.
All right, well, at this time then, we'll open it up for any members of the public that would like to make a statement. Again, at this time, you can come up, identify yourself. You have three minutes to... Oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute break. And then you'll have that opportunity.
Yeah, I saw you did, then you beat him to the punch.
Okay, so here, I hit stop. You'll need to restart it now, okay? Okay.
Okay, we got a call, the meeting got to order. We're gonna start with the... And you have three minutes to give your comments. Is there anyone wanting to do so?
Can you give us just one moment to get our recording back up? Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
My name's David Mengeal, I live at fifty-six sixteen Irish Lane. And I've lived there for thirty-six years. It's, this is a nice, quiet, peaceful neighborhood. I can go out in the evening sometimes around sunset, especially in the fall after the frogs and the crickets are gone. I can't hear anything. It's great, it's fantastic, it's just, it's so peaceful out there. And, you know, quite frankly, you're gonna have bands playing on a Saturday night. What about people who wanna go to, you know, bed at nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock with their windows open? They're not probably looking for that kind of a serenade, you know? And I just, how are you going to, you know, keep the noise to make sure it's not gonna travel? Out there in the country, it really, it really travels. Doesn't matter which way the wind is blowing. If there is no wind, it blows. It's a peaceful, quiet neighborhood, that's why I'm there, and that's the way I wanna keep it, that's what I wanna see.
My name's Todd McDonald, I live at fifty-seven twelve Irish Lane. It's approximately, it's epic, the intersection, more or less, of Irish and Lincoln. Lincoln is a gravel road, so every time a car goes by, I have a puddle of dust that flows usually over my property, if not jump across it. So, the other traffic is more than just traffic noise and that. To me, it's also a dust storm. And that's gonna be kind of repetitive at a certain time as everybody's going through the venue. So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be dusty. As far as the last wedding we had, it did go on till midnight. And I couldn't necessarily hear the music, but there was a constant boom, 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 boom going on. And I was inside the house during a rainstorm, thunder, lightning, with the TV on. And you could hear it over everything. So, it's an annoyance, and I think everybody would agree. We moved to the country for peace and quiet. Knowing it's an agricultural area, you're gonna have gunshots randomly, you're gonna have cows mooing, and, you know, I have alpaca, they scream. So, that does happen during the day, everything quiets down at night, and it's pretty peaceful out there. And I think we'd like to keep it that way. That's just my opinion. The need for a wedding venue in that area, I don't see it. I mean, again, people raise goats and cows, and, you know, it's a farming community. So, thank you for the time, Mark.
Anyone else?
Hi, I sent this out as an email, but I don't know if I got to many of you because...
Your name and the address.
I'm sorry, Tracy Scottman, one seven one two zero Lincoln Road. I sent something out, but I just sent it out this morning because unfortunately, we only got like about a two-day notice. And that was a mailer that was taped to our mailbox from a concerned neighbor. So, we received that notice. I know there must have been something in the paper, but like, you would think properties directly connected or directly adjacent would have actually had more of a notice. With that said, I'd like to address the McCamery County Unified Development Ordinance, section one six dot two zero dot zero four zero dot E. Standard number six states that adequate access roads must be provided. Our property, you know, the Julie property, we're on the east side of Lincoln Road. The road is not paved, as was mentioned before, and it's in really poor condition. Particularly the stretch between kind of Julie's and Lee Road. On the portion of the road maintained by Hartland Township, which is a little bit more on the west side, there's a lot of shallow potholes, it kind of looks like a washboard out there, and you can't really avoid them, you're, the cars just do, 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 through all of it, creating dust storms and all the rest. On the part maintained by Alden Township, and maintained is probably not the right word. The part that is supposed to be maintained by Alden Township, there was very deep potholes, some of them like beyond my ankle. I have pictures of, you know, potholes taller than my ankles. And they go across the entire road, so you cannot avoid them. One of our neighbors actually goes out and throws gravel in the holes for us. There's also crumbling remnants of coarse asphalt bindings that were just dumped onto the road with no paving or whatever, like ever a decade ago, and they're all crumbling and falling apart. So, the roads are in very poor condition. We actually have a special needs, roads be good condition, because can you imagine transporting, this is my new semantic, can you imagine transporting or a van with roads that are all bumpy and everything? And we are very, I've got a genuine concern that extra traffic will just create forms of survey and poor road conditions that we already have. The, there's literally a sign that says rough road when you enter Lincoln Road from Green. It actually says rough road, which I think was in response to me complaining that the roads are in poor condition, they threw up the sign and said rough road. Both townships are actually aware of the issue. I've brought it up to them many times because of my concern. And unfortunately, they just tell me that there's no funding. So, I am concerned that this would be an undue burden on the townships as well as us.
Okay. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Please come on up.
Basically...
Your name and the address again.
Oh, I'm sorry, W X Room seventeen two oh eight Lincoln Road. I agree with, you know, my neighbors about, you know, we all moved out there for that reason, to have quiet peace and all that. And I always like to be respectful of everybody using their property to whatever they wanna do. And I take Henry at his word that he, it means to have only a dozen. I am very concerned about the fact that it is for sale, and the next person coming in, the type of property it is, they might wanna make a full-time kind of a venue out of it. Of, you know, with the castle being a impressive kind of a structure that I could see someone wanting to come in there and actually do that with this property. And that would really change the dynamic of where we live, because we'd all be then with a commercial venue in our backyard. It's less maybe about what he's maybe gonna do with it right now, but more about what it would be when it's sold. And one question I have, is it possible to make this conditional permit, should you decide to go with it, even after everything everybody said, where it expires on sale? And it's not...
That's not possible.
Okay, that was a question I didn't know. Then that's my biggest concern, is that the next owner would want to really do it as a full-time event location.
Say something?
No.
What if the next owner...
Henry, no, this is only public participation. All right, is there anyone else who would like to make a statement?
Hi, Sam Scottman.
Hi, Sam Scottman, seventeen one twenty Lincoln Road. Standards three and four state that the conditional permit shall not be detrimental to or ingenious to the comfort, enjoyment, and general welfare of the properties and its neighboring vicinity. My family purchased the property in nineteen seventy-two for the purposes of enjoying a quiet country life, and apart from the occasional vehicle driving by, we hear birds chirping by day and owls chirping by night, and owls hooking and crickets chirping by night. It's very peaceful. Loud music late into the night would be very detrimental to this. The music is loud enough to be heard over a half mile away and heard over thunderstorms with sunny mouth for our winds. Our family is very upset at the thought that we may be forced to hear it every weekend if this conditional use permit passes. Because of the lure of the properties in our neighborhood, it's having a quiet country living, allowing this conditional use permit from the owner will diminish our property's values, standard five. Standard three also states that the conditional use permit shall not endanger the safety of the neighboring vicinity. The potential for alcohol and impaired drivers of our neighborhood after wedding receptions is substantial. This poses a risk to our property and to our personal safety. Thank you for considering the impact of our neighbors, and we hope your decision to approve this conditional permit.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to make a statement?
Richard Miller, fifty-six ten Irish Lane. I thank the higher gentleman for running through the approved standards, as I've seen a bunch of the same things. Number two, I don't see how it's compatible with the existing neighborhood. Three, obviously, it's going to affect the comfort and general welfare of that immediate neighborhood. Four, traffic, particularly of Irish and Lincoln, is definitely going to increase on the weekends, and not to mention the dust and the noise from tires going over the gravel and the amplified music. I don't see how the roads are adequate for this, being a gravel road. Congestion and hazards on public streets is obvious. And I think that the conditional use permit would only serve to bolster the marketing of his property now, so it has increased his property value, but it's arguable that it has a negative impact on the neighborhood as far as the values. Also, again, one of the things I noticed on this, something for the board to consider, I'm sure the attorney filed all of the necessary steps, but it's my understanding from speaking with personnel in planning zoning, that there was only one property required to be notified of this here. Okay? That might be, you know, might have met the obligations to it, but I think perhaps a case-by-case thing with the amount of property he owns, maybe it should have been expanded, you know, a variance on that as far as notification. If the board decides to approve this, can I make a couple suggestions as far as conditions of the cup? One would be a max, an actual number as far as DD levels, so that if the sheriff is called out there, they can measure. That again, going to noise, it does not be allowed after ten P M. And consideration of banning alcohol at the events. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else that wants to make a statement?
Can you make a statement?
No, no.
You can. She said so.
Please, let's move along. We've got to get this finished. Go ahead, you want to make a statement?
I'm Mary Lucetcheff, one seven four zero five Green Road. Overall, you have been a wonderful neighbor, and I had no complaints. Living on Green Road, especially one of the last two venues that have been there, absolutely the noise carries. So as far as the future of you sell the property, you have no control over that, and it's going to be another issue. So for us to discuss what's going to happen if the property gets sold is pretty much a moot point right now. So why should we even waste time discussing it? What we're concerned about right now, and if I'm hearing everybody correctly, the biggest issue is noise, and it did go on until eleven o'clock last week. It was, yeah, midnight, I'm sorry.
One person talking, please.
Thank you. And, you know, and that seems to be the biggest concern. So all I can say at this point is either we're going to have to learn to live with it as things go on, or being the good neighbor that you are, maybe there's something that you can do that can help buffer that noise. And I would just give that to you for your consideration and hope that you'll take that into your, into your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
My name is Judy McDonald. I live at five seven one two Irish Lane.
Please speak up so we can hear you.
Oh, Judy McDonald, five seven one two Irish Lane. I wonder at the short notice of all of this, because we just got this in our nailboxes and was like, wow, really? We've heard the boom, 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 and it was probably funny, but I thought there was a one-time deal, you know? So I wonder, at the time of day, this is people who work that are all around this area, who would have something to say after five, six o'clock, is there any way to have this for people who don't have to be home on a day and retire?
No, our meetings are Thursday afternoon, and if someone wants to send a letter, they can, so. Anyone else? We done? Does the petitioner have a closing statement?
Briefly. Trying to be good neighbors, trying to keep the footprint small. I believe we met standards for reclassification in May, two day one. Also, the standards for the conditional use were in compliance with the conditions that are being proposed.
Please speak up too, so that.
It's, we're also in agreement with those conditions being proposed as well.
Okay. At this time, we will close the hearing portion of the meeting. We will move along to the voting portion of the meeting. Again, this is for application twenty twenty-three dash zero two one, requests for A two to A one agriculture on six point four six seven acres and a conditional use permit to allow a reception facility and art studio on two point six seven three acres. We have some proposed conditions by staff. I'll read those. The conditional use shall expire ten years from the date of approval by the McCamry County Board. Number two, the conditional use shall substantially conform to the site plan listed as exhibit E, stamped, received May thirteen twenty twenty-four. Number three, temporary portable restrooms must be removed after each event. Number four, all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Are there any other proposed conditions?
I do have one.
Okay, Ms. Gartner.
I would propose a condition regarding lighting to be turned off at midnight.
I'll second that.
So the condition is that lighting is turned off at midnight. Any discussion?
Which lighting?
The venue lighting.
Say venue lighting.
Okay.
Because if he's got front garage door lights on or something, you don't want the cops to.
Okay, I'll amend to venue lighting.
You okay with that, Charlie?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. Any more discussions?
Yes. Okay. I've seen some pictures recently of the venue, and I would like to amend the lighting, the downward lighting if it's electrified, as is, as is part of our dark skies ordinances that all talk about that, like you have in a parking lot that it's set downward so you're not lighting up, sodium vapor lights would light up the whole place. It's not Las Vegas.
Is there a second for the amendment? Failing a second for amendment is dropped. So I'll call for the vote on this condition, that venue lighting is turned off at midnight. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so this condition is accepted seven to zero. Any other proposed, proposed conditions, Ms. Gartner?
Yes, I would propose that the sound for the venue, music, microphones, whatever, be turned off at eleven P M.
Might I suggest that it say that there be no live or amplified music after eleven P M?
Yes.
And I will second that.
So the condition is no live or amplified music after eleven P M. Discussion? No discussion?
It is for itself.
Yeah. Okay. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so that condition is approved seven to zero. Any other proposed conditions?
I have one more.
Okay.
I would propose that the venue be limited to twelve events per year.
Could we have discussion?
That the conditional use permit be limited to twelve events? Yes.
I would, I foresee an amendment to that.
We'll throw it ahead.
Which is it be limited to twelve between the twentieth of May and the thirtieth of September.
I don't see the need for that. I think twelve per year covers it. Depending on when they are, if there's twelve per year during a three-month period, it would be more frequent.
Well, let's see if you have a second now to limit to. You can't, you can't talk right now. Sorry. This is, this is just the board. So the conditional use permit limited to twelve events.
We have to amend it because of the yoga thing.
Correct.
Anytime. So this would be twelve, what would we call those? Party events?
Party events.
Reception facility events?
Reception facility events.
Yes. Shouldn't women yoga classes?
No.
No, we do not form a yoga class.
And I'm standing.
Thank you, as a yogi, I appreciate that.
Yeah. And I'm standing by on twelve per year.
Okay, so conditional use permit is limited to twelve wedding facility events per year.
I did not say wedding.
Oh, reception, reception. Thank you. I meant reception. All right. All right, discussion on that. Has I seconded that?
No, I think.
Per second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on that?
What is the amount of people? What if I have people that want to do barbecue? Is that an event? Or if, so when you say twelve, twelve would be twelve weddings with live music, but what if I have a gathering of twenty people, fifty people, they want to use the dome for a barbecue or something? Then what?
You're limited to that, but there's going to be no enforcement unless your neighbors complain.
So you shouldn't invite your neighbors.
I shouldn't? Sure.
And there's only four.
Yeah. All right. My, my point is, do you want to say twelve events with live or amplified music?
Yes.
I like that.
That's exactly what I want to say.
All right. So the conditional use permit is limited to twelve events with live or amplified music.
Good.
Twelve per year. All right. Any more discussion on that? Everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay.
Just make sure I got that correctly. So we are removing the three reception facilities and limit to twelve events per year that have amplified or live music.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
No.
And I'll vote yes, so that's approved six to one. And was there a proposed condition per calendar? Are you going to propose it, Charlie?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other proposed conditions?
I move acceptance of. You got one?
I've got one. I would like number three, temporary portable restrooms must be removed after each event, and I would like to say within seventy-two hours, which is three days. So even if it's on Friday, by Monday, they can still have somebody come out.
I'll second that.
Anything? Any more discussion?
It's an awfully restrictive time period if you're dealing with a third-party vendor.
You can plan that before you ever start, before you ever have the amount done. If they can't come in between those three days, there are plenty of people who can do it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, the, it's an amendment to number three, which will be temporary portable restrooms must be removed within seventy-two hours after each event. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so that's amended seven to zero. Any other proposed conditions?
I have one. Yes, the conditional use duration under the county ordinance is ten years. The county board can create a shorter duration by specifically by the language of the ordinance for its expiration, and I would propose five years as a recommendation for their consideration. It goes to the issue of this being called a temporary event.
Okay. Is there a second? Do you know second? That condition is dropped. Okay, any other proposed conditions?
I move acceptance of the conditions as I made.
It's been moved by Mr. Eldridge to accept the proposed conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Eldridge, seconded by Ms. Gartner. Any discussion? And I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so the conditions are approved seven to zero at this time. I would entertain a motion for, we have two requests.
Yes, I move acceptance of both parts of the petition and the conditional use portion subject to the conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Eldridge and seconded by Ms. Gartner to approve this request. Discussion, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes, as to the A two to A one, as far as I'm concerned, that's a no-brainer. It's a down zone. It is in an area that is surrounded by A one. All the, everything within miles of there that isn't A one is more densely zoned. I see the reason he's doing it is because the conditional use is not possible within A two, but anytime you can downzone a property and the petitioner wants to do that, I'm all in favor of it. With regard to the conditional use, I think some issues were raised, but I believe that we have addressed the real concerns. Fifty cars coming and going in the course of the day simply is not significant on any road. With regard to the conditional use, I think some issues were raised, but I believe that we have addressed the real concerns. 50 cars coming and going in the course of the day simply is not significant on any road. The roads at the tail end of the county have several hundred cars a day going in both directions, and most of the roads in the county have a good deal more than that. I sympathize with people who are on gravel roads or who have to drive down gravel roads. I've done a fair amount of that myself, although less and less over the 70 years or so I've been driving. But I do not see a traffic issue. I also do not feel that this petitioner or any of the people in this room have any impact one way or the other on whether people are driving impaired. And I simply think that that is a red herring in this, or any petition, absent evidence that the petitioner is engaged in improperly serving alcoholic beverages, which certainly was not testified to in any way today. With regard to noise, noise is always a problem, and sometimes music carries more than others. In some areas, it seems to carry more than others. However, this really is not a densely populated area. I, it was noted that there was only one property owner that was close enough to the subject property to need to be notified, which is evidence of just how sparsely populated this area is. Most of it is either conservation area or farmland with just a few scattered homes within a mile or two. I believe that our condition, limiting the number of times amplified or live music can be used and limiting the hours that it can be used, addresses that adequately. We have to balance the rights of the petitioner who owns his property versus the rights of the other folks in the area. I think also limiting the number of events is important in reducing its impact on others. And frankly, I think from what everyone has said, this petitioner is a good neighbor, has been, and undoubtedly will continue to be, that the real risk is a subsequent owner of the property. And I think limiting it to 12 times a year sufficiently protects that issue. This, and I, a concern was raised that because of the unique nature of this entire property, that a subsequent user might make it into a much grander venue than exists presently. The exclusion of the extraordinary dwelling really makes that impossible without coming back before this board in the case a subsequent owner wanted to do that. So I don't see that as a risk without further hearings and further consideration. I believe that all the standards have been met for both a map amendment and for conditional use, and I will support the petition.
Ms. Gartner?
I, I think that this is actually a fairly passive use on this property. I mean, this is not, you know, major advert tourism site like a Richardson's or, you know, All Seasons Apple Farm or anything, where you have a lot of people coming and going and possibly throwing trash out the windows. This is, this is pretty passive compared to that. It's not like a megachurch or a solar farm. It's a piece of property that will be shown off to the best of its, of its beauty. I think that the standards have been met, as Charlie said, as far as the problems with the neighbors, the noise, I, I think that, you know, that can be helped, working with the petitioner, the petitioner working with the neighbors, we can keep the, the volume at a point where it's not going to drive people crazy. If there's only 12 events a year, that's not that often that it's going to really bother people that much. I do believe this is a, oh, and that's the lighting. You can work with the staff on the lighting to make sure that that's not a problem. I do think you should have that barbecue and have all your neighbors over.
And zoning board.
And zoning board. And I, um...
Mr. Cozen?
Thank you, ma'am, Charlie. I may be one of the only members whose township has two existing castles within its area and have the privilege of sitting here not having to address the zoning for either. That also then provides me with a surprise that I would be confronted with an issue of such a land use, because I am also one of the few people who, while considering a visit to the Biltorn, Asheville, Bowman Counties, North Carolina, wondered how the land use and the zoning was being applied to that building. Saying all that, the problem is that the use that is before us does not clearly fulfill the tools that we are given under the ordinance. The zoning board repeals, as I have found in short term versus those of other on the board, is often asked to either be the edge of the spear or be the shield. And the best we can do is to lay out the standards and follow the guidelines, which means the difficulty of not being able to address, as it is not our venue, to address such issues as the inadequacy of infrastructure, the application of the state liquor ordinance, litter, or even the ability of addressing noise, who in a past life I had to contend with that from a stadium far removed from corporate boundaries. Nonetheless, seeing how the conduct of this applicant has been to construct what he has been able to build for such a long time under governmental watch gives me no pause in supporting this conditional use.
Mr. Schnabel?
I agree with everything that's been said.
Mr. Jurz?
I agree with my colleagues wholeheartedly.
Ms. Donner? I'm finally the last one, I agree.
And I agree, I believe the standards have been met, and I, I think the conditions that we put on this have addressed concerns while weighing, as Mr. Eldridge said, weighing the, the needs of the property owner as well as the surrounding community. So I'm in favor of the request, so I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so this will go to the county board with a seven to zero vote for approval. At this time, the hearing is closed.
Thank you.